I'd like to call to order the Dauphin County Board of Commissioners Legislative Meeting for Wednesday, November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We'll begin with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with the approval of minutes. We have minutes from workshop October twenty-ninth and legislative November fifth. Do I have a motion for approving those minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Executive sessions held between meetings. Mr. Haggerty.
On Tuesday, November eighteenth, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding personnel matters, active or pending litigation, county finances, and the purchase or lease of real property.
Any questions of Mr. Haggerty? Hearing none. Public participation on agenda items only. This is for the public to participate on any items that are before us today on the commissioners' agenda to be specific. And there's a three-minute time cap and we are being livestreamed and you need to say your name before you comment. Anyone who would like to participate on agenda items only for public participation. Seeing none, we'll move to election board. Commissioner Hartwick.
I'd like to call the meeting to order for the November nineteenth election board. The first item before us is the approval of minutes. Again, should we have public comment before the approval of minutes? Well, rearrange the this. The first call is for public comment on agenda items only. Public comment on agenda items only. Hearing none, we now want to move the approval of minutes for the November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five election board meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Douglas. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Mr. Spackman come on up for the final certification of the votes cast at the November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five municipal election.
Good morning.
Morning.
Following last week's first certification of the results of the November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five municipal election, there have been no challenges or recounts. Following final certification today, we will begin issuing election certificates to winners. For those who have campaign finance filing obligations, will not be able to issue the election certificates until after they have filed their thirty-day post-election report, which will be complete as of November twenty-fourth and do no later than December fourth. For our write-ins, we will begin to notify those individuals who have thirty days from today to either accept by completing the necessary paperwork or decline their election. This Friday at noon, at the Bureau of Registration and Election Office, we will be conducting a tiebreaker drawing. Currently, there are over three hundred individuals who have tied for various positions. And the largest tiebreaker we'll have to conduct is a seventeen-way tie for Minority Inspector of Elections in Harrisburg, Florida. If there are no questions, I respectfully request that the Board of Elections provide a final certification of the results from the Dauphin County Municipal Election held on November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Are there any questions for Mr. Spackman before I entertain a motion?
I just have a question of curiosity. How do you go about breaking a tie?
Yeah, no, it's a fantastic question. So we have a pill bottle that has numbers one through sixteen in it. And the lowest number will win the position. So we'll just go throughout mathematically. For the one with the seventeen-way tie, what we're gonna do is create, we'll probably look at index cards numbered one through seventeen and just have it pulled to that way. Individuals who have a tie, they have been notified already. They do have the ability to decline, and a lot have already done that so far. They are more than welcome to be there for the tiebreaker and actually pull the number. If they're not, they don't have to be there, of course, and we'll do that for them.
And to be clear, most of these individuals were probably written in, were not necessarily actively running for a position. They were written in and a bunch of people wrote in a friend's name and it was only one person.
Exactly.
Wrote themselves in.
Yeah, the majority of these ties are votes, one vote or two votes.
Understood.
Yep.
And for clarification, the the position where there's seventeen individuals tied, have any of them written back they're not interested yet?
I believe we, not sure exactly on that one. I know we've had probably about forty individuals, give or take, who have already responded to the various offices, so it's certainly possible we can get below that.
So if it's below sixteen, you'd be able to utilize the normal.
Pill bottle. Exactly. Yep.
And thank you for a great job again. You say it every time, but you and your team and the volunteers across the county that were able to put this election on again, a fair, free, efficient election. We appreciate it.
Thank you. And it certainly is a team effort from you three sitting up here to people sitting in this room, countless individuals throughout the county, county employees, voters, residents. So definitely want to thank them, echo that comment and thank them as well.
Any additional comments? This time it entertained a motion for final certification of the votes cast the November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five municipal election.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Priest. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Spackman. Thank you, Mr. Spackman and staff. At this time, is there any additional comments for the election board to consider? Any public comments in front of the election board? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Douglas. The meeting is adjourned.
As we head back into our Board of Commissioners meeting, we'll begin with Directors and Guests. We'll start by Salary Board Cassie Roschinsky.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
There is no salary board packet this week, so just the personnel packet is ready for your approval. There was no revisions from last week.
Could I just ask a clarifying question? I know we're in the middle of a hiring freeze. And I know there are, you know, sort of requirements. I know there are departments that have not participated, some have voluntarily and some are exempt. Mr. Haggerty, could you provide an update related to today's personnel packet and an update around those, that hiring freeze that we've implemented?
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. As you referenced, several weeks ago, we instituted a county-wide hiring freeze for those departments under the Board of Commissioners jurisdiction, except those relating to public safety, the prison, and elections. So any positions that appear on today's personnel packet are either those that meet one of those exemptions for public safety elections or the prison, or were positions which were offered and accepted prior to the hiring freeze going into effect because we wanted to honor, you know, our word to employees, prospective employees who maybe, you know, accepted an offer, quit their job, and then the hiring freeze went into effect. Or the third category of items that would be on here are two independently elected row officers who declines to participate in the hiring freeze, and that would be the clerk of courts and district attorney's office.
Thank you, Mr. Haggerty. So all of those meet those standards and are ready for action today?
Except five of them on on here in the sense of these, do we know if these hires were offered and accepted prior to, meaning the clerk of courts and the district attorney offers that are on here?
I I would not know that, but given that those two offices declined to participate in the hiring freeze with their independently elected authority to choose to do so or not, I, that exemption would not be relevant to them.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for the personnel packet.
Just just one more question if I could ask. If I think following Commissioner Douglas's line of questioning, we were to not approve those individuals that were brought forward for those who refused to participate. Is there a legal obligation of sixteen-twenty for us to proceed in their voluntary submitted?
That's something I would have to research to give you a solid answer on.
So I want to thank all of the row officers that have helped and and added to that participation. I believe without clarification to that, I don't want to put the county in a position. So I would agree to adopt these personnel-related matters today, but have clarification for any future matters that would become before this board related to those particular offices. So I'll take that in form of a motion.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion?
Yes, all those positions discussed are within the budgeted twenty-two-five numbers.
As far as I'm aware by that department, yeah.
Thank you.
My only comment is that, given that there's a number of other agencies on here that had already made offers and been accepted, I'm in approval of these for today for these row offices. But moving forward, as there's, as those no longer exist and we're still in the middle of a hiring freeze, I personally won't be in in approval. But I am in approval of this today. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Budget and Finance, Christopher Davis.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
I have no changes to the investment report that was sent out earlier in the week. There's also no changes to the purchase order packet. It's ready for your vote and approval.
Right, and do I have a motion for the purchase order packet?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion?
Yeah, can we get a clarification on the POs? Some of these have what appears to be a positive budget remaining and others have a negative budget remaining. Is there a explanation for that?
Yeah, the ones, if you look at, you know, the first page, the first one is our supervision fee fund, which is part of the fiscal budget. As part of our ongoing Oracle issues, our vendor was able to get us to be able to push that budget and only that budget over. So that is the only appropriation codes that you will see actually against a budget. Everything else is within the calendar fund and that's part of what we're working to get corrected in the software.
Thank you.
Is it is it your understanding, though, that these expenses are within the budget, the budgeted amounts?
Not aware of any budgetary issues.
Okay. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second for the purchase order packet. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Chief Clerk's report, Mr. Haggerty.
Good morning, Commissioners. There are several items on today's agenda for your consideration. We have one prison agreement, one invoice relating to the county's prior due diligence at Techport, four legal services engagement letters, one lease extension for nine-one-one equipment on the roof of three-three-three market, three satisfaction pieces, one adult probation software agreement, seven Parks and Recreation presenter agreements, one lease renewal for telecommunications equipment, an agreement with Copier Analytics to provide a free analysis of our print operations, two mental health, autism, and developmental program agreements, ten adoption assistance agreements, and four children and youth agreements. The revenue and the revenue anticipation note we were considering utilizing prior to the recent passage of the state budget in conclusion of the federal government shutdown remains in former business. And as it is no longer necessary, I recommend voting this measure down. That concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Haggerty. Any questions of Mr. Haggerty? Solicitor's report, Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Commissioner. All matters requiring board action have been reviewed and approved by the Solicitor's Office.
Any questions of Mr. Owens? Hearing none, we'll move to matters requiring board action. I believe item number three, we need more details on. Is that, am I correct on that? Potential table?
Yes, I was asked to provide some, sorry, to provide some information on this particular law firm and the matters they're handling. It it is a simple request for them to raise their hourly rates, which happens with a lot of our outside counsel around this time for the upcoming year. But I will need some time to give the board what information was requested.
Do I have a motion to table?
So moved.
Three.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number three is tabled. Just for clarity, thirty-seven, the training packet, I believe we voted on items one through four last week that I'm seeing in the training packet and items five and six. If I could just get any head nod that items five and six are all that need to be acted on today. Items five and six. So just to be clear, when we say I, matters requiring board action, one through thirty-seven with without number three, for the training packet, it's only items five and six. Do I have a motion for the matters requiring board action, one through thirty-seven, without number three since it's been tabled? And the training packet being only items five and six?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Priest. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion?
Yeah, just for clarification, the items that were voted on for three and four, a similar item was voted on for myself at a prior meeting and for some reason, separate meetings. Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Move to former business. We have a resolution that's on the table here for former business. Given what took place last week, that the state passed a budget, I do not believe this is any longer relevant, so I think we need.
I'll make a motion to take it off the table for consideration.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to take it off the table for consideration and a second. This is just taking it off the table. We're not taking action on it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion that we vote down Resolution eighteen of two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Motion made to vote down Resolution eighteen, two thousand and twenty-five, by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. New business? Seeing none. Is there any business? Commissioners discussion and actions. Commissioner Hartwick has none. Commissioner Priest?
Yes, I want to thank our Parks and Rec Department. They hosted a sponsorship appreciation event this week and it was well-attended. And I want to say thank you to all the sponsors that enabled us to put on all those great events at our Parks and Rec Department. Again, as I've said before, over nine hundred thousand people attended our parks last year, so it's being heavily utilized. But we couldn't do these events without the sponsors that participate and provide funding. And Anthea, thank you for a great job you and your team continue to do. And lastly, had the privilege of attending the Woodward Loft's groundbreaking senior housing project yesterday. Commissioner Hartwick was there as well. The Latino connection and it's a great opportunity for seniors to be able to get some affordable housing in the city of Harrisburg.
Great. I also attended the Parks and Rec appreciation event. Thankful to all of our partners and sponsors for Parks and Rec and the work that they do to connect to them and ultimately to to push our parks forward and to display them in the county, definitely. For some, a hidden treasure, but hopefully not hidden. And hopefully you can get out to our parks and enjoy them. On Monday as well, we had another DCP Academy graduation, fifteen new CEO, or fifteen new CEOs that that came on that that I'm. that I'm excited to see our numbers continue to improve as we as we get staffed up. That's my update. All correspondence will be received by the Chief Clerk's Office. We'll move on to public participation. Is there anyone for public participation? Three-minute cap. We are being live streamed. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.